Even though it's a recurring yearly purchase or contract?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, no, I was just, no, yeah, because I had questions about that. How do, because that's something that we do every year, every month, every year for the last 20 years. So, okay, thank you, I appreciate that. That's it, that's it for me, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Calderon, thank you, Ms. Calderon. Let's go on, L five, School Resource Officer.
So, just a little update on this one, trustees, just for context. In regards to SRO services, I know we had discussed bringing in the Sheriff's Department. And so, I did have a meeting with the Sheriff, Chief Shepherd, and also with Chief Gerardo from the Calexico Police Department on November first. And so, there was a mutual agreement at that point, both of them, that they would not be able to enter into an MOU because there was a conflict, and primarily, it was based on jurisdiction and the off-campus nexus that would be created. Some examples that they gave, for example, would be child abuse cases, for example, child neglect cases, drug deal cases, fights that carry off-campus, investigations involving court evidences. And so, this was a mutual agreement between both Chief Gerardo from Calexico PD and Chief Deputy Shepherd from the Sheriff's Office as well. There was a follow-up meeting that Trustee Ciro Calderon had with Sheriff Loera. And at that meeting, there was a discussion to set up another meeting, which we did attempt to set up on November the ninth. At that point, Sheriff Loera had something come up and he could not meet. So, I did follow up at the Board's request regarding further discussions with the Sheriff's Department to have an SRO, and I did get a response from Sheriff Loera. He says that, at the current moment, there is no change in my ability to provide the services at this time. He has also had a brief discussion with Calexico Police Chief Gerardo, and that he's not aware of any changes at this point, where the Sheriff's Office and Calexico PD will be able to enforce cases stemming from schools or outside the campus, which, again, goes back to the conversation that was held on November the first regarding the off-campus nexus and primary jurisdiction concerns that they had at that point. So, that's just an update to the Board regarding reaching out to the Sheriff's Department and trying to have a discussion regarding SRO services.
Any questions for Mr. Gonzalez? Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
Yeah, last time I made a comment, Calexico now will be able to provide a SRO. The Sheriff cannot, does not have jurisdiction here. It's critical that we hire security guards from a company. You know, we gotta think outside the box, and our kids' safety is important. So, we gotta, we have to look into hiring security guards.
I concur with that. If, if they cannot provide the services for whatever reason, then we need to look out for the safety of our students.
I mean, we've discussed this issue for the longest time already, and it, Calexico doesn't have the manpower, and the Sheriff does not have the jurisdictional coverage. So, let's, for the safety of our kids, let's hire security guards from a company.
I'm in agreement with that also, Richard. I think it's something that's vital, we just have to make sure that whatever we go out to contract, they could go ahead and, and do, you know, provide those services in for our school. Because I know, I think there's other schools here in the district that just provide security services in the morning, and that pretty much, once the students get there, they leave, and the proctors are the ones that take over at that point. We just gotta make sure that, you know, the parameters that they could, what they can do and what they can't do. And I think that's gonna be, be vital for us.
Well, this is an emergency, we should move on if fast, and have it for the next meeting.
We can definitely look into it.
Bring it back, next meeting for possible discussion and action.
We'll look at what options we have, yes.
Yes, okay. Richard, we'll bring it back, next Board meeting. Mr. Gonzalez is gonna do some research and see what our options are with hiring a security agency. And I also have to agree with you, we need to do something about it. All right, any other questions? Thank you. L six, Estudiantina and Folclorico, who's?
So, this item was requested by Trustee Ciro Calderon.
So, when we went to CSBA, on the opening, on the opening day, we had a, there was a high school that provided a very nice show of Folclorico and Estudiantina presentation. So, I know in the past, because I was part of the Estudiantina in 1990, I'm wondering if, if that's something that we wanna bring back for our students at the high school.
I think it's something that, along those lines, I think it's something that's vital for our students. You could see just them being involved in some type of different type of arts. Their learning capacity just, you know, it's that much more as far as it goes. Also, the following, I think it was the following day, they had the other, kinda like hip-hop dance club that went up there. That's another option also as well, you know, if that's the route that we wanna go. But I know for a long time, it's been standing that the Estudiantina was, was very big and something that other schools look forward to getting on their campuses. I remember when I was in elementary school, they went over during Christmas time to provide some type of show for us there at the Hopeville Elementary School, at Finley School. So, I recall, and they, you know, they would come in with all dressed up and stuff like that, and they made, you know, an impact, and it's something that other schools, they couldn't provide. So, that's something that I think that we should visit with a little bit more time and, and look into it to see if we could, you know, provide that for our students there at the high school. Not only at the high school, see if we could provide some type of Folclorico also as well for our students in the lower levels and junior high school also as well.
So, trustees, we do have a Folclorico, you know, group, and I know Ms. Williams is here. If you have any questions regarding the programs that are offered at Calexico High School.
Good evening, everyone. We do have a cohort, a group, an Estudiantina group. In the past, we've had two, sometimes one, depending on student interest. It is in the, it is a class, and it is in the master's schedule, and it's been there for seven years I've been at Calexico High School. We do have a Folclorico that unfortunately, it's not active this year. The Folclorico has always been a club after school, and right now, under the current situation, our teachers are not staying after school. But I do wanna remind our Board and our community that we have a very successful music program that for the last seven years I've been there, they've supported city events, county events, ICOE, Imperial Valley College, everywhere I go, I brag and, and with a lot of pride, offer our services. We have mariachi that have been all over, you know, our Imperial Valley. Our choir is now official at Calexico High School. We started it about three, four years ago, and last week, we had our music performance where choir, our jazz band, who's been very successful in the valley as well, and has won in competitions, also perform. So, we're getting there, it's a slow start with music. Teachers have explained that bringing the group and the voices and the instruments together has taken time. The kids have not played together as a group. But they've already supported one or two city events, and I believe County Office of Education as well. So, we do have an Estudiantina, and our instructor is Mr. Marcus, and so.
What about the Folclorico, is that something that maybe we could be, turn into a class?
The two teachers who offered Folclorico in the past, we started it as a club, and then assets supported their expenses with dresses and, and the attire. Can we bring it as a class, the two teachers are at max? It would be very challenging to, they offer Spanish, and our Spanish courses are at max and very much needed in the master's schedule. So, I would need to be very creative and look at other teachers that have Spanish credential or for sure as an extended contract, and if they're interested. Yes, and it was, it was just taking off for Folclorico before the pandemic. It was in place for three, four years. They did several performances again in the, in the city, at our schools. They traveled, along with them, they paired up with our mariachi, who was very successful as well. It was a great performance. We want our Folclorico back, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Any other questions? No, thanks. We will move on, M discussion slash possible action, M one, process for superintendent search.
I wasn't here in the meeting, but I did saw the presentation. There was three options. Which one was, was for, to hire a company? The second one is to do all the work ourself, and the third one was to get, like, a, what is it called? A specialist or?
He's a facilitator to assist the Board?
Yes, a facilitator to assist the Board.
Or, he mentioned very briefly a possible fourth. Sometimes the county office is willing to step in and assist with the search, but that depends on your county office.
Yeah, so I didn't know what happened, what, what, what happened in closed session? What are we gonna do for that? I'm asking, it's a question.
That was something for the process of the search, I think we agreed that we're gonna hire an outside agency, or we were discussing that was possibly it, or we were gonna bring it back, right, correct, to?
Yeah, there, there was no vote on it.
Yeah, correct.
The, if you're gonna use a search firm, you do put out an RFP, so then you would need to give direction that an RFP would be prepared, and the search firm, they would invite the search firms to submit proposals. So, it would be a couple steps before they start the search, but time is really of the essence.
Yeah, correct.
So, where are we going?
So, I, I wanna make the motion then to go out and do an RFP to, for an outside agency to come in to assist.
Is there a second?
What was that?
Make a motion to approve a search company to come in, an RFP, to, do an RFP in order to provide a search, a search company to come in and help out with assistance of a superintendent.
Oh, yeah, I will second that.
There's a motion of, to do an RFP on measure, or M two, and it's seconded by Ciro Calderon, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 All in favor, motion passes, we need to do an RFP on, on this. And three, buddy benches.
Actually, M two.
What's that?
M two.
I mean, that was M two? Oh, I'm sorry. M two, district-wide classroom furniture overview.
So, we added this item to the agenda's discussion, possible action, just to seek for direction on how to proceed with our district-wide, classroom district-wide furniture needs. And we have, I have a short presentation on this, that is up to date. Can I change it from here? So, just to go a little bit to our background, Omnia Partners Public Sector, the district registered to formally participate in the Omnia Partners Public Sector Team and was successfully accepted on February twenty-four, twenty-twenty. The district participation allows, allows access and utilization of all the competitively solicited and publicly awarded agreements through Omnia. On March eleven, twenty-twenty-one, the Board approved, adopted a resolution that allows the district to purchase Han furniture, including installation from authorized distributors, including but not limited to Perrin Hall, at prices that will be in the best interest of the district. On March eleven, twenty-twenty-one, the Board approved, adopted a resolution that allows the district to purchase all-still furniture, including installation from authorized distributors, including but not limited to Perrin Hall, at prices that will be in the best interest of the district. On March eleven, twenty-twenty-one, the district presented the purchase and installation agreement with Perrin Hall to replace classrooms and office furniture at Kennedy Gardens Elementary. The motion to approve said agreement failed, and the district received direction to request proposals. The district proceeded with the Board directive and requested proposals from various furniture distributors. The RFP condition was to propose Han brand quality or better. On May twenty-four, twenty-twenty-one, as part of the RFP process, a mandatory site visit was held to, to assess the needs with principals input. Proposals were received on June eleven, twenty-twenty-one from four furniture providers, Three Sixty Business, BKM Perrin Hall, and Southwest School and Office. On September nine, twenty-twenty-one, Board meeting, the district presented the Board all four proposals in form of a summary. The RFP summary was based on district-wide standard furniture needs comparison across the Board and to make it fair, and the recommendation was given to the Board based on the following relevant data. Data taken into consideration, pros and cons. Perrin Hall, Perrin Hall is a Omnia, is under the umbrella of Omnia, it's an Omnia partner, providing discounted prices through Han and all-still. It's a hundred percent of their proposal was Han. The district has a JPA resolution with Han, and the Han brand provides full, full lifetime warranty. BKM, Omnia Partner, it is in Omnia, it's under umbrella of Omnia, but only for steelcase brand. Only ten percent of the furniture proposal was steelcase, the rest was mid-systems and global furniture. The steelcase has limited lifetime warranty, as well as mid-systems with a twelve-year warranty. Southwest, a hundred percent of their proposal was Han. The district has a JPA resolution with Han. However, Southwest is not an Omnia partner. Three Hundred and Sixty is a hundred percent of their proposal was Laurel, limited lifetime warranty. Three Sixty Furniture is a local vendor, and Three Sixty is not an Omnia partner. So, the only proposal the district could accept is Perrin Hall. A hundred percent of their proposal was Han furniture, they are under Omnia. CUSD has a joint power resolution in place with Han Furniture, there's no need to go out to bid. If the furniture procurement is for non-steelcase, non-Han, and non-all-still, and it's over ninety-six thousand seven hundred, which it will be, the district will have to go out to bid, and the contract will have to be issued to the lowest responsive bidder. On September nine, twenty-twenty-one, the Board selected, awarded the RFP to Perrin Hall. Based on the Board RFP selection, the district coordinated with all the site principals to make their furniture item selections. The district requested official quotes from, from Perrin Hall based on the principal selections. The district elaborated a purchase agreement based on the selected and quoted items. On the November eighteen, twenty-twenty-one Board meeting, the district presented the purchase agreement with Perrin Hall, and the motion to approve failed. The motion to table two, the November thirtieth meeting, passed. On November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one Board meeting, the motion approved died with two-two vote. And that's just a background of the three classrooms at Main that were furnished, where we went through Perrin Hall and Kennedy Gardens. And then the next is just some pictures, and Mr. Meadows can elaborate more on those pictures.
So, wanted to make sure that we share with you in the slide right before that, that we all, we were only able to replace three classrooms at Main's and five at Kennedy Gardens, that is it. And then Calexico High School does have new furniture in their new buildings, but other than that, what you see here are pictures from different schools. If, go back to the other one, the first one. So, these are our desks, and we just took samples from every school. Most of our desks, desks are shipped, chipped, chipped, sorry, in different corners and the edges. If you look at the legs of the chairs, they don't have the cap, or they're disbalanced, so the kids wobble up and down. The one on the far right on the bottom, those are Enrique Camarena's, and their furniture is also starting to, to chip at the top. And the next slide, you're gonna see dilapidated teacher desks and tables used as desks, so teachers are getting different types of tables to make it look like a desk. They, they are also peeling on the sides, and they're, like, everything's mixed-matched. The next slide. So, I can tell you by experience how we scramble around, running from schools to schools, to obtain different desks. So, in our classrooms, especially at Kennedy Gardens, because I can speak to especially to Kennedy Gardens, and I can also speak to Calexico High School, which I walked some of their classrooms, different color desks with different color chairs, with different styles, because you can tell that we've been running around just to form classrooms with the furnitures that we've, we've had. Here are some of the cabinets that you find right now in the classroom. This is not trash, that's what we have in our classrooms. So, that's why, when we talked about classroom furniture, it's student desks, teachers' desks, teachers' filing cabinets. Next one. And so, you've seen several of our resolutions for furniture that's considered trash, which is what you see on the right, but then you still see them in a lot of our classrooms inside. So, a lot of the, what, classes are getting new pieces of furniture and putting them outside, you have to keep in mind that a lot of our schools are still using what's considered trash inside the classroom. Our chairs, I told you last time, that kids, students pinch themselves because there's little cracks. You can see what I, what, what, how the cracks are in the, in the different chairs. And I believe that's the last slide. So, we are in dire need, and we understand that the Board has concerns. We just need direction, we, we, we need to, do we have, do you prefer that we go out and bid and go through the entire process all over again? And as Maribel said, if we do go out to bid and we're not going through the, through our Omnia, then we do have to go with the lowest bidder, correct?
Correct.
So, we just want direction. We need furniture, what, what is the direction or the wishes of the Board?
Financially speaking, I can tell you that I don't see that opportunity coming in the near future because of our one-time funds. We really, really are in great need of this furniture and to move forward. So, we're just seeking for your direction, how to proceed.
In September, we, so, in September, we approved the Han, the Perrin Hall.
Correct.
The Board approved it.
Correct, but the purchase agreement was not approved.
So, in this, in M two, you're asking if we could proceed to buy the furniture?
Yes, we can put back as an action item the purchase agreement to move forward with Perrin Hall.
I move to approve M two.
Yeah, discussion, possible action.
For discussion real quick, Amy, that was, I think that was the thing that we spoke about last time at Cesar Chavez's RFP, that RFP was, didn't have a dollar amount when it was approved. And that's something that we wanted to look at. It didn't have a dollar amount, from what I stand corrected, that's why I said, I had a lot of questions in regards to RFP. The RFP was approved, but without a dollar amount. I was under the impression that it was just gonna be for new furniture coming into the high school, not for an open, it's kinda like an open check for everything else, correct? It didn't have, RFP didn't have, the RFP that we approved the first time, didn't have a dollar amount.
The, the RFP that we issued was for, to seek proposals for district-wide classroom furniture.
So, it sounds like your options, right, are you go with the RFP, or you can put it out to bid if you wanna see what else is out there?
The only?
From the presentation, it sounds like the other companies did not meet the RFP proposal requirements?
Exactly, they're not excluded from the bidding, from the bidding process.
But they could bid if you put it out to bid.
Yes, the only challenge with that is that when, when you go out to bid, you specifically have to say what branch, how many, the color. It has to be very specific into what we need. That's why we requested a request for proposal. Because they assess our needs, and based on that, and then everyone, all the, with the help of all the, the sites, we were able to, to get together what we needed. I, I do see the challenges if we pursued going through the bidding process, but it's, we're just, we're just seeking what, direction.
It, it sounds like there's, you know, you have the opportunity to get the one-time funds, there are options.
Oh, correct, correct.
So, I just wanna know what the path forward is.
Yes, so right now, we're ready, we, we're just ready to move forward with, with Perrin Hall.
Ms. Pius, with all due respect, I mean, this item died the last time. And, and don't get me wrong, we have the money. I'm, if our students need desks, chairs, or whatever it is, I'm all for it, a hundred and ten percent. The way it went about is what I have. This is a six million dollar investment, and I want the best for our kids. And when I say the best, is the best-fit furniture for our kids. We keep talking about lifetime warranty. And, I mean, I don't wanna start again, because I think I gave, made my point the last time. I think we should sit down, see what our stakeholders need, and then come up and, and let us know, so we can make a decision. I have an issue when you just pass the board chair and say, pick a desk. I have an issue when you had one person just do this report on these bids, and, and when it should be more than one, to see what these people have to offer.
A lot of?
So, I think that, I, I mean, I'm, I'm not voting for it. And, and the, what I'm not voting for is that we're not prepared. We got other issues at stake right now. We, we had a full classroom today, and I know you can't compare apples to apples, but we got a lot of things right now on our hands, and this keeps coming up. We got an agenda in front of us that we might not even finish today. So, all I can tell you is that we need to do a survey of what we need, and then go out to bid. And make, like, we talked about earlier about equity. We talked about equity earlier today. Well, that's what I'm talking about, that each, every school should have the same equipment and what they need. Because that is equity.
So, if I may, Board President, just for direction, I know the staff is needing direction. So, we understand that there is a need for furniture, I think that's without a doubt, right? I don't think any Board member here, after watching the presentation, would make an argument against the need. There is money available, like, as being mentioned, you know, really, one time. So, this is our one-shot opportunity to be able to get this furniture. So, I guess the question, in regards to survey, there was, you know, requests from the site principals regarding the needs, which I think are very evident from the pictures. So, in regards to next steps, we want to make sure that we take advantage of this need. We don't want it to pass us by. So, in regards to next steps, I think we just want some clarity regarding, what is it that the Board would like us to do in regards to next steps? Go out to bid, because the need is there, it's not gonna change.
Mr. Gonzalez, I have a question, and correct me if I'm wrong here, but these funds, that, they're one-time funds, don't expire until three years from now, correct?
Correct.
Correct. So, we have three years to get the best for our kids, three years. So, we just need to get going and try to get coordinated, surveyed, and bring it to us. So, thank you.
You know, staff?
I think there was a motion, there was a motion, so.
A motion, okay, well.
There was a motion, see if we get a side.
There's a motion to approve this.
Yeah, I made the motion, staff making a recommendation, we have to rely on staff. We, we need to stop micromanaging, trying, this is incredible. I know, I know, Lencio, that you didn't get the company that, that you wanted, okay? So, let's move on. In September, we approved the RFP. The students need these, the furniture, it's obvious by, by the pictures. And you say you care about the students? We're using, we're using Essler funds. That's a gift to us.
Okay, Richard, there, there's a motion, you put the motion out, is there a second? Motion dies, for the second time, for the record.
So, is, was the, the direction of the Board, or would there be a motion on whether to? It sounds like for the bid, they need to survey and, and see what the need is, and have specifications about what it is needed, so?
No, actually, Amy, I, I think, I wanna bring back up that RFP, that, that was done, that way you could review it to ensure, you know, if I'm wrong, then, you know, that way we could go ahead and bring it. But I think the RFP wasn't, there was no dollar amount on it when we first approved it. The second time they brought it up for an action item, there was a dollar amount placed on it. But I think, you know, at that point, it- But I think, you know, at that point, I, I, you know, I don't think it was done. There, there was two different things, but I mean, it's a dead issue. We could bring that back up in January. We could bring that back up in January. I, I don't want to discuss it any further, because we do have to approve the rest of the stuff. So that, that's it for me. Thank you.
Just for clarification purposes, the RFP was a two-phase RFP. The first phase was to invite vendors, furniture providers, to come out to our school sites and assess our needs, and give us their best proposal. And the only condition that we put on the RFP language was to propose HAN quality or better. We're talking business. We want good furniture in our school sites. So propose us HAN quality or better. That was the only condition. We received the four proposals from the four different vendors. There isn't going to be a dollar amount because we haven't decided yet how many desks, how many chairs, how many tables. So that's where the phase two came in, right? So after the company was selected, then the school sites worked directly with the company to select which tables their school site needed, because there are different grade levels, there are different sizes of the kids. So then they decided, we need these chairs, we need these tables, we need these desks. And then that provider was able to provide us a quote. We elaborated the purchase agreement, and we brought it for you on the second phase of the RFP with the dollar amount.
Thank you, Ms. Calderon.
No problem.
M3, buddy benches.
Mr. Ocampo will present.
Give me again. On the buddy benches, I just need, it was brought up, I, we didn't get guidance last time. We just need guidance to see where you guys want to go with it. There's a total of, on the presentation, there's a total of 70 benches. The estimated cost without taxes is $123,000. So I do need guidance on how to move forward with this item.
Are we going to need DSA approval to install these?
No, we don't want DSA approval. They're all in, within the perimeters of our property. And the only ones that will be outside, but still in the, in the, in the, in our, on our land, would be Cesar Chavez and Kennedy Gardens. The rest are inside the fence.
So regardless of whether we have inside or outside buddy benches, no, no DSA approval? So we don't have to wait six months or eight months, or whatever the case may?
No.
Okay, perfect.
Ms. Ocampo, were the principals surveyed?
Yes, the, the, if you go to the next slide, every slide is based on where the maps were at for the sites. Next slide, next slide. That, this is an example of, and I can't, Blanche Charles, I believe. And we did talk to, to the, I'm sorry, I can't see that. Yes, this is Blanche Charles Elementary, and we did talk to all the sites. Yes, sorry about that. Des, every site was surveyed. I did talk to every principal. Or in case of CHS 9, I did talk to the vice principal, and they selected where they wanted the, the benches to go.
Ms. Ocampo, are these going to be stable? I mean, you're going to tie them down?
Yes, we have to, because of, of, like, if we put, if we put the, the cover on top of them, like in the second slide, go back, please, that, like that, we're afraid that they have to be anchored, because if there's any wind or anything like that, they might pick them up, or even the kids might move them around for stability reasons.
Any questions, board members? Well, I, I motion to approve this.
I second.
What, what exactly are we approving?
Well, I mean-
To move forward?
Yeah, to move forward.
Okay.
But I would like buddy benches both on the inside and outside.
Well, we, we can't have them on, on the outside, because sometimes, like, let's give an example, like Rockwood, we're at the fence line.
Oh, okay.
And, and we need to make sure that we, you know, we, we set them properly because of ADA requirements. We can't also set them on the sidewalk sometimes.
Okay.
So that's the reason why we can't set them on, sometimes on the sidewalk or inside our property.
No, okay, well.
Well, it was a first and a second already.
What's that? So you're not ready to approve this?
Well, this is just to make sure, we, we still have to get a quote for, go out to bid.
Okay, all right, I didn't hear that. So I withdraw my, my motion.
But there was a first and a second to move forward. That way you could go out-
No, to move forward.
To move forward.
So you wanted a- All right, so there's, there's a, a most, a first motion and a second motion to go ahead and move for the approval, to move on on this project, correct?
Yes.
All those in favors, please say aye.
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 All right, thank you. We'll bring it up. It takes about-
Motion passes five.
But we'll bring it back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we go on to end action items, consideration and action slash approval of the following items. End one approval of the 2021-22 First Interim Report for fiscal year.
So good evening, Board of Trustees and everyone, and join us tonight. For the record, my name is Maribel Pies, and I'll be presenting the 2021-2022 First Interim Budget Report. Our budget process, as we all know, we just closed the book September 14. We actually presented our un-audited actials and our revised budget, per Education Code 42100. After 45 days, we have to come back and, and just give an update of all of our expenditures and revenues up to, from July 1st to October 31st. So this is just a glance of all your actials up to date, and is also an opportunity for you to make any revisions to your current budget. Assumptions and planning factors for 2021-2022 and, or multi-year projections. And before I get started, I just want to say that this is the latest information we receive, we have, and the majority of these numbers are actually provided by different, various government entities. However, they are, this is the latest information, but coming January, we're going to have the Governor's January Budget Proposal. And the LAO Legislative Analyst Office and School Services have actually declared and have, have a few fiscal reports that have come out, where they're actually noting a remarkable revenue growth. So we are looking into probably more funding for, under proposition, NDA 4 or school for K-12 LEAs. So they're looking into our LCFF, increases funding through our LCFF, as well as into more federal one-time funds. So it's looking good. I, I really hope that the January Governor's release, we receive great news. Our numbers are, are, are looking, are looking better, though. So this is, this is the budget revision and MYP. They're based on the latest information we have with all the Governor's budget released yet for 2223. One of the, of the big things that is happening is attendance. As we all know, attendance is held harmless for the 2122 projected, 20, 2122 year. We are using P2 ADA for 1920, which is around 343 less ADA, that it's equivalent to around 4.5 less revenue for the ongoing years. And a lot of the state entities are actually calling it an attendance cliff for 2223. So right now, they're actually, actually also looking into policies to mitigate the impact of declining enrollment and ADA due to chronic absenteeism. So they are looking into that as well. But as far as the information that we have now, they still haven't passed anything for the ongoing years. So we still don't know if we are going to be held harmless, or there's going to be other type of formulas they're, they're going to be actually implementing for our local control funding formula, which is your main revenue of source. So as you can see, our enrollment 2122 were 8,563, and this is uncertified call pads report. We are projecting around 200 decrease for 2223 with 8,370, and then for 2224, 8,160, giving you an average daily attendance of, for 2122. Again, we are funded through the 8,669, which is the 1920 ADA, but we actually currently projecting to be at 8,326 on our P2 report. The cost of living, as you can see for 2122, we are at the, they, we did receive the 5.07%. They are projecting the 2.48, but this might, might change to 5.35%. So we're still waiting, like I said, for that release from the Governor's January budget. And everything else, as you can see, we have our unemployment rate that also went from a 0.05 to a 0.50%. That was also an impact to our budget. And then our workers come, again, continues to, to increase, as we have presented. Also, Dr. Thurman presented her numbers. Sorry, having trouble with the, okay. So this is a breakdown of our last board approved budget, which was September 14 to first interim. So what are the changes? As you can see, just a glance to it really quick, the change from revenue, total revenues of 4.6, and then you see the expenditures for 4.5. So it's basically all the changes, all the new grants that we have receiving. There is a new expanded learning program, a new educator effectiveness, and there's, there was also reclassifications from the expanded learning opportunity grant that actually went from state funding to federal funding. And then we have some minor revenues received from local sources. All those changes, of course, affect your allocations. You do have to account for all the revenue under your expenditures as, as well. So you can see there's a breakdown of all those changes as well. Another thing that I want to emphasize, that excess or deficit spending, we are doing a little better. We are projecting instead of a 3.6 deficit spending, a 3.5. So it is decreasing, and a lot of what happens, again, a budget is, it's, it's a living document, and as we move on the year, there's, for example, positions that are not filled and things like that, where you can have a little bit more savings. Now, there is a beginning fund balance audit adjustment that we had to make, and this was brought up to all the districts, district-wide and locally have this, this same issue. And what happened is that this was because of the 7425 research, which is expanded learning opportunity, moving in through, into being a state funding to a federal funding. There was, there's a lot of internal changes that happened with the revenue. For example, revenue that you did not use in, in last year, so 2021, instead of carrying, carrying over that balance, the audit firm and, and the county actually recommended for us to recognize it in 2021. So our beginning balance, balance actually moved to 2.5 more. So as you can see, our ending fund balance from last board approved budget, September 14, already increased from a $33 million to a $35 million. Any questions? And this is just the projected revenue. So as I mentioned it earlier, 61% of our, our main source of revenue is your local control funding formula. And this is actually, and it's just a, a snip picture of how our local control formula calculator looks. As you can see, you see, let me see if I can use my, you can see the COLA there, the 5, 5.07. You also see our duplicative pupil percentage. You see that they're using, for 2122, we're using our held harmless ADA of 1920, which is the 8,669, giving us a total revenue of the $112 million. So it's just for you guys to see how the calculator looks. This is a calculator that is actually put together by the state, sent to the county, and then the county sent it to the, or, to the district. Now we have our first interim projected expenditures. Here, a 65% of the district expenditures are salaries and benefits. And I just want to say here that our numbers are very much, you can say inflated because of all the one-time funds. Multi-year projections combined, this is, this is unrestricted and restricted, because I am going to be breaking down unrestricted and restricted in a little bit, but this is combined. This, one of the things that is happening here is due to the state and federal one-time funds, the multi-year projection numbers are not consistent from year prior to the pandemic. The significant increases amount of salaries, benefits, and operating expenditures are a result of non-permanent allocations for one-time expenditures. So as you can see, there's not pretty much a lot of consistency when you combine both. As you can see, for example, salaries just went, go very high one year and then low the next. So this is a multi-year projections unrestricted. So as I want to show here, therefore, our unrestricted, as you can see, there is pretty much way more consistence. Yes. There is consistence when it comes to our salary. You can see there is the cost of living adjustment. So pretty much, or all of our other operating expenditures status quo. Now, I know, Mr. Ciro Calderón, that you had a question on where our general fund money is going. This is the unrestricted side of the house. So you can see there, our salaries and benefits. Let me see if I can point it. Salaries and benefits, 84- That is the narrative. This is the presentation. That's the narrative. So as you can see, for the unrestricted general fund, you wanted to know how our funds are being spent. And you have the breakdown of all of the percentages, and you can see that the majority is for salaries and benefits. It varies from 84 to 86% is for salaries and benefits. And you can see a consistent on all of our operating budgets and salaries. This is our unrestricted side of the house. We can also confirm the LCS, LCFF resource. You can also confirm how the calculator is giving us the revenue. That is the revenue that I don't come out with. That is actually provided by the state. Any questions on the unrestricted? Restricted. This is actually where you see all the changes, all the impacts of the one-times actually happening into the budget. You don't see a consistence from one year to another. And the reason is, as you can see, for example, this is how we calculate the revenue. You can see all the yellow highlighted is the one-time funds. You can see from 21 to 22, how the changes to 2223 and then 2324. So those, that, that's actually how the revenue is calculated for restricted, and it's just no consistence at this time. Now, for example, the impact of not having the fine funds in 2122, of course, you have to impact your expenditures as well. So as you can see, there is significant adjustments to the multi-year projection for restricted. And all of this is, is due to the one-time funds. It's, it's just a tremendous challenge to put an MYP together, because there's things that are going up, but there are also things that are going down because of the one-time funds from one year to another. Do you guys have any questions?
I saw on that, on the, on the one that I was looking at. Not on the one that you showed me. It says total certificate salaries, and it went from 54 from this year to 50 in 2324. Why would that be?
Oh, yes, so let me go back, as I was explaining that combined. This is the combined. I just wanted to split it a little better for the presentation, so you see that actually the significant changes are to the restricted side of the house. They're due to the state and federal one-time funds. That's why there's no consistence on our budget. And I'm breaking it down by unrestricted, where there's, you can see a consistence. There actually makes sense, the unrestricted- There actually makes sense, the unrestricted side of the house. The restricted doesn't. And the reason is, is because of the one-time funds. The impact of the one-time funds have to our budget, to our restricted budget. Now, if you add the unrestricted and restricted, it's gonna give you the combined, which is the number that you just gave me. Any questions?
Just for the record, to emphasize that we have a structural deficit. As you can see, in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, it's three million five. In twenty-three, it's four million five. And it goes up to six million six in twenty twenty-four.
Correct.
You have a problem coming up.
We do. We do. And again, it's a major impact to our declining enrollment, a major significant chronic absenteeism that we have. Workers' compensation that we have, and I'm gonna explain a little later, all the challenges that are unique to our district.
Mrs. Pius, what kind of problems will we face?
I'm sorry?
What kind of problems we'll be facing?
That's almost towards the end. Give us just a few minutes. Okay, any questions on our NYPDs? And I'm gonna give an example. This is an example of our certified salaries, multi-year projections, impact of one-time funds. So one-time funds have impacted our non-positional certified salaries to pay for independent study, student case management, tutoring, and credit recovery, curriculum, development planning, professional development, and so on. And as you as you can see, again, and this is just object code one thousand, which is your certified salaries, no major impacts are to the permanent salaries. The permanent salaries is still calculating the step in columns. There's 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 consistence. You can see the restricted side of the house. Again, the impact of the salaries is for under the one-time funds. And as you can see, extra duty siphons, which is your extra hours that we have to pay to address learning loss. And this is just one option. This is just one example, which is your object code one thousand. But the same way that we have this, we have it for all of the different object codes. We have it under classified, operating budgets, benefits, everything impacts. One-time funds just impact your budget from one year to another. Another example is professional consultant services and other operating expenditures needed to be adjusted, including but not limited to. Again, when we have one-time funds, we buy technology, we're gonna have to buy warranties, we're gonna have to do installations, we're gonna have to do consulting. So there is all of our object codes are impacted. And it's not for hiring a specific consultants. It's just overall a fifty-eight hundred. It's just so many things that you have to consider with one-time funds. And this is just an example. Fiscal challenges ahead. So there is, the majority of these challenges statewide, everyone nationwide, we are experiencing. But there are some challenges that are unique to the district. That's why we cannot compare ourselves to Brawley, Imperial, or any of those districts. Even though we get revenue through our local control funding formula, we're this, we are different. We don't, other districts do not have the challenge that we have because we're a border town. And let me just show you an example. Attendance Cliff, we have, look at their numbers, look at our absenteeism. Look at how much we're gonna be losing. We're gonna be losing around five point two. And this is just from August twenty-third to now, five point two on chronic absenteeism. And this is how much we lose, the district absenteeism and ADA loses. And all the districts are different. And we lose it every year because we get funded through on ADA, not on enrollment. So all of the districts are different and unique on on those, for example, on absenteeism. Another one that makes very unique, and it's a challenge only for the district, is our health insurance rate. We know that we have a hundred, we pay a hundred percent of our insurance. So we cannot compare ourselves to other districts. We are all different. Challenges ahead, structural deficits, declining enrollment, held insurance rate increases, pending negotiations. This is unique, again, to our district. The projected COLA does not provide sufficient funding to offset the amount of attendance ADA lost the district has experienced. More challenges, pension rates, workers' compensation rate. This is another unique challenge that the district has, only Collexico, eight point twenty percent. We're paying eight point twenty percent when all the other districts, look at the percentages that you that they're actually paying for the workers come. So another challenge is that statewide, everybody is experiencing quickly, how to quickly expand federal one-time funds in a market with a high demand. Spending one-time funds on ongoing salaries and why? Because do not have a long-term budget to support permanent staffing. And again, our high contributions to underfunded programs like special ed and our routine restricted maintenance account. Any questions? So our numbers look better, our numbers look better. We, like I said, again, state is predicting to have an increase on our revenue for Proposition ninety-eight and for our local agencies as well. So any questions?
Excellent report, thank you.
No, thank you so much. Great report.
Thank you, Ms. Pius.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Romero to approve, second by Alvarado. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five oh. And two, approval of revised Easter three expenditure plan. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion on the floor by Romero, second by Alvarado. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. And three, approval of educator effectiveness block grant expenditure plan for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two to twenty twenty-five to twenty-six. Move to approve.
I second with the comment.
All right.
All right, motion by Romero to approve, second by Maya Yaganis with a question.
Hello, Mrs. Price. I was reviewing the the block grant. My understanding is that every district gets that grant. And my question, my question and comment, have, how have we been spending this grant for the past years?
So this, we haven't touched this money. I don't believe that we've actually received educator effective funds yet. We have, we know there is an allocation, we are creating the plan, but we haven't spent any of those funds. One of the things that has been so difficult with this plan, and actually with all these one-time fund plans, is the very short turnaround from when these funds are announced, the requirements put out there, and then the deadline to submit these plans. If you remember, I did the presentation for this plan at the end of November. And then we went off on Thanksgiving break. We followed that. And then the board items for the agenda were due that Monday when we returned. So there really wasn't time to follow up and do very many changes to the educator effectiveness grant. The other challenge we're facing is the other one-time plans in addition to our Title One money and Title Two that are all, that all include professional development. And so it's like, okay, how do you prioritize? And the only good thing with this particular plan is that while ESER and Expanded Learning Opportunity Grant expire in twenty twenty-four, this one gives us an additional two years to spend. So we haven't touched it.
So we're, so we're still, you're still working on a systematic plan?
Say that again?
A plan, how it's gonna work?
So this is a plan? This is the plan, this is a very general plan that we're gonna continue when we are ready to spend these funds, going back to the group that we're gonna be providing professional development with and getting the specifics in terms of the topics, the who the trainer is going to be, and who is going to be the group that is going to be trained.
Okay, I would like to have updates on what our staff will be trained on and what they're gonna be bringing back. Thank you.
Yeah, because, just to mention, because of this long plan or drawn-out plan going into twenty twenty-six, we'll probably have to have revisions, and so those will be brought to you.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Any other question for Ms. Price?
No, thank you.
So there was a motion by Romero, second by Maya Yaganis. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. And four, agreement with professional service between Collexico Unified School District and Integral Inspection LLC for the fabrication slash implanting inspection for one steel shade structure at Collexico Unified School District Police Academy. Move to approve. Motion by Romero, second by Calderon Junior. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. And five, resolution for the intended to submit a the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three continued funding application for automatically renewal to the contract for Kennedy Gardens State Preschool.
So move.
Second. Motion by Alvarado, second by Romero. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 No, it's a resolution.
Resolution, resolution.
Roca.
It's a Roca, I'm sorry. Roca Calderon.
Aye.
Romero.
Aye.
Maya Yaganis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Calderon Junior, aye. Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Mr. Calderon, for letting me know about it. And six, first reading and wave second reading on revised board policy and administrative regulations thirteen twelve point three dash uniform compliance procedure. I motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Alvarado. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Where we at?
We're on N six.
N seven.
N six. N seven, we're on N seven.
N seven. First reading and wave second reading for of revised board policy and administrative regulation six one four two point seven dash physical education and activity. I motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Alvarado. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. And eight, first reading and wave second reading of revised administrative regulation six one seven four dash education for English learners.
I move to approve with a comment.
Second.
Okay, there is a motion to approve with a comment by Mr. Calderon and second by Mr. Romero. Go ahead, Mr. Calderon.
Ramírez. On this, in N seven, if, I mean, N eight, is there something, is there something pressing regarding, what is it that they changed for English learners? Do you have something off the top of your, oh, there we go. Yes, yes, she's coming.
Silve Yáñez, good evening. Yes, the state policy changed the reclassifica, the ARF monitoring from two years to four years. So our board policy does not reflect that. So we're changing it, you know, to correlate and be aligned with the state requirement. That's what we're changing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That was it, Mr. Calderon.
So it's N eight, there was a motion by Calderon, second by Romero. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. And nine, first reading and wave second reading of revised board policies nine two seven zero dash conflict of interest.
So move.
Motion by Alvarado, second by Romero. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. And ten, agreement, agreement renewal between Collexico Unified School District and Class Leasing LLC for the leasing of relocatable classrooms in various district sites. So move. Second with a question. So. Actually, there was payment on our pre-list regarding these these relocatable classrooms. I know we have Easter money, Easter money. And I know before Ms. Randall was looking at it to probably possibly paying some off.
Exactly, and that's exactly what we're doing. I, we receive a quote, but we're still looking into the sites because we might not need all of them, especially the high school. So the ones that we are gonna need, we're looking into purchasing them because it's just, it's just no cost effective for us to be leasing them when we can purchase them. But we're just assessing the needs. Which ones do we need, which ones do we don't need? So we wanna maybe present something either January, February to to bring it back, to purchase them. But right now, we do have to move forward with payment because we are a little, we have to, yeah, we have to make the monthly payment.
Well, thank you for looking at that.
We're looking into that, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other question for Ms. Pius? No? All right, there was a motion on the floor. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. And eleven, approval and adoption of findings in Collexico Unified School District annual and five-year development fee report.
So move.
Second.
Second, I have a question on this.
Go ahead.
Ms. Pius, the only question I have, because I get approached at supermarkets, especially at Lowe's or at Home Depot, how does our fees compared to Imperial, Brawley, El Centro, and so forth?
I'm sorry, I'm having hard time understanding. What was?
Our fees that we're approving today compared to El Centro, Brawley, Imperial?
Oh, no, our fees, we already adopted it was in November. Yes, this is actually just a report that has to be presented to the board. And it's actually just the expenditures and revenues that we have received under capital facilities fund. So it's just a requirement for us to present a revenue and expenditure for Fund twenty-five.
Okay.
But to answer your question, I think unified school districts, we're able to collect the full amount pursuant to statute. But then in our district, because we meet certain requirements, we are now charging that higher level two fee rate with respect to like Brawley and other school districts, they're not unified. And so once the elementary school districts, all the feeder districts come together, their collective fee rate would potentially equal our fee rate. So theirs would be lower than ours.
Okay. All right, I just wanted for the public to hear what's going on. Okay, appreciate it. There's a motion on the floor, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. And twelve, notice of completion of Kennedy Gardens Elementary and William Moreno Junior High School sports field lighting and borderline antenna. Move to approve. Motion by Romero, second by Calderon Junior. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero.
For president, I move to extend the meeting till ten thirty.
There's a motion by Alvarado to move our meeting to ten thirty. Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Ms. Maya Yaganis. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. And thirteen, variable term waiver for twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-two school year for Liliana D. Garcia and Jenny Pacheco Mandu Hano.
So move.
Second. Motion by Alvarado, second by Romero. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. And fourteen, agreement between Collexico Unified School District and All Valley Fence and Materials for the main elementary and Jefferson Elementary fencing project.
So move.
Motion by Romero to approve.
Second.
Second by Alvarado. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. And fifteen, agreement between Collexico Unified School District and Pixie Bite Bite Solution Inc. for the installation of video surveillance cameras. for the installation of video surveillance cameras at maintenance and operations.
So move.
Second. Motion by Alvarado, second by Romero. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. And sixteen, agreement between Collexico Unified School District and Reed Naturally for licensing for students at Cesar Chavez Elementary. I motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Alvarado. All those in favor.
Aye.
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 Motion passes five zero. I myself. And seventeen, agreement between Collexico Unified School District and Jim Nelson Construction Inc. for the modular building demolition at maintenance, maintenance and operations.
Motion to approve.
Romero, motion to approve. Uh Calderon Junior seconds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. And eighteen, agreement between Collexico Unified School District and Consciences Cultura to provide social emotional learning, youth leadership training.
So move. Second.
Motion by Alvarado, second by uh Romero. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. And nineteen, agreement between Collexico Unified School District and Western Environmental and Safety Technologies LLC for water sampling at various district sites.
I I move to uh approve this and thank you very much for this.
Um Alvarado, motions to approve.
Second.
Second by Romero. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. And twenty, purchase agreement between Collexico Unified School District and Vic Air Conditioning and Electrical for one new five-ton AC unit at Enrique Camarena Junior Ha- High School Cafeteria. I motion to approve with a question.
I'll second.
Second by Alvarado. I'll let you get up here. Mr. Ocampo, just a couple of questions. Normally, this just appears on the pre-list. What, what, why is this so different?
Because normally in the summer, we consider an emergency. So under the pre-list, um we could add it as a redification. But because it's winter, it's not considered an emergency right then. So we have to bring it up to the board.
Okay, alright. And my second question is, the uh contract says it is a four-ton and the item says it's a five-ton. So wha- what is it, a four or a five?
I have to, I wanna say it's a four, but it's whatever's.
Well, the contract says four, that's why I'm asking.
It's four. That was a mistake when we, when we were.
So for the correction, I I believe that we wanna strike five and make it a four? Amy?
Yes.
Yeah, you're, if, you're approving the agreement, right, and the agreement says?
Correct.
Okay, well, for the record.
We don't have to change the intent, uh you'll just approve the agreement.
It's a four-ton, not a five-ton. Thank you, and that's all I have.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you very much. And twenty-one, first reading of revised board policy nine two four zero dash board training.
Did you vote on the last one?
We didn't vote on the last one. What's that?
We didn't vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's my first day.
N twenty.
Fire me. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. It gets better as we go along. Alright, um and twenty-one, first reading of revised board policy nine two four zero board training.
So move.
Motion by Alvarado.
Second.
Second by Romero. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. And twenty-two, second reading of new board policy nine zero zero five point one dash sensor procedures. I motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Alvarado. All those in favor, please say aye.
Hi.
Aye. Motion passes five zero.
Trusty Calderon, um on N twenty-one.
Yes.
I was advised in your, your typical protocol is that if you want to approve on the first reading, that you also move or take action to waive the second reading. So if on N twenty-one with the board training, if you wanna go, it could come back on another agenda for a second reading or your practice is to to waive the second reading?
I don't know, how does the board feel?
Oh, or Janet?
I I can barely hear.
Oh, okay. On the, on the board training item.
Uh huh.
I was advised that the practice that you have about first reading and second reading is that you, you can do first reading and waive second reading or or do, bring it back for a second reading at another meeting. So the way N twenty-one is phrased, it would come back at a future meeting. But the, the, the board could do that or?
Can I waive the second?
Yeah, the board could choose to waive.
Alright, well, I motion to um approve the first reading and waive the second me- um reading on revised board policy nine two four zero board training.
I'll second that.
Second by Alvarado. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. And what?
Twenty-three.
Oh, okay. Um and twenty-three, rejection of claims, Salvador Perez versus Collexico Unified School District.
So move. Second.
Uh motion by Alvarado, second by Romero. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. And twenty-four, relish- resolution regarding disposition of surplus asset, non-asset office furniture at English Learning Center.
So move. Second.
Move, um motion by Ro- um Alvarado, second by Romero, although, what's a roco?
Yes.
Calderon, yes. Romero?
Yes.
Mag- Magallanes?
Yes.
Alvarado?
Yes.
Calderon Junior, yes. Motion passes five zero. And twenty-five, resolution regarding disposition of surplus asset slash non-asset technology equipment at Kennedy Gardens Elementary. Motion by Calderon Junior.
Second.
Second by Alvarado. Roco. Calderon?
Yes.
Romero?
Yes.
Magallanes?
Yes.
Alvarado?
Yes.
Calderon Junior, yes. Motion passes five zero. And twenty-six?
I'd like to recommend that the board approve the certified employment report as submitted.
So move.
Motion by Alvarado, second by uh Romero. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. And twenty-seven, classified employment report.
I'd like to make a recommendation to the board to approve the classified, classified employment report, however denying the unpaid leave of absence request by Figueroa Ortiz.
So move. Motion by Alvarado.
Second.
Second by Romero. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Oh, reconvened to earlier closed session. We'll be going out to closed session. Thank you. Okay, let's get this. P, reconvene from, um to open session. Q, announcement of action taken in closed session, none. And R, adjournment, we have a motion?
So move.
Motion by Alvarado.
Second.
Second by Ms. Mayag- Magallanes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes and good night, everyone.